I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do our windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINYS. Just call. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, January 8th meeting of the Pembroke Quarter Select. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance today of the United States of America. To the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 15. It's also being recorded for airing on the channel on future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. First order of business is a scheduled appointment with Eagle Scout candidate CJ Perry with their request for a fourth vote regarding its proposed Eagle Scout project. CJ, you want to present?
So I'm CJ Perry. I'm a junior from the Crystal. And I'm here to propose my Eagle project. I propose to construct two four-foot long benches along the east side of Little Sandy Beach in Pembroke. And I'll also be conducting a cleanup of the beach along with painting the shed in my new coat of white. I plan to begin working on the project in the spring of 2018 and hope to finish it by following late spring 2018. This is mostly a preliminary meeting right now. I am in the first stages of my Eagle project. I have to go through a few more meetings with my troop and district. So right now, I'm just presenting my information that I have now.
Arthur, the new fence is up now, right? Is it?
Yeah, it's up.
Yeah, I thought so, yeah. Well, that's going to be great. Get the new fence on both sides and get, that'd be great improvements to that beach. I'm sure Mrs. Hill will enjoy it very much.
She'll look at this.
Yeah, I have that.
Yeah, okay. Well, she surfaces when the weather gets real.
Yeah, I think it's a great project. Mr. Chairman, if you'll obtain a motion, I would move that we grant CJ Perry the authority to put two benches down at Little Sandy Beach as part of his Eagle project.
In a second.
All right, so you have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes the hands.
Looking forward to this.
Yep.
Thank you for coming in. Good luck in the reelection.
Thank you.
Good. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Thanks for doing it.
Yeah, let us know what the color of the building is going to be.
All right, we want to be action items. All right, Peter Brown, I'm Senator Carter. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
So good evening, everybody. My name is Peter Brown from the Pembroke Chamber of Commerce. Just to let you know, we have a new set of offices this year that we're going to be taking over. Again, talking about trying to do a membership drive in March. Our first event, then we're going to have our first networking event. It's going to be at Susha Savings Bank, Pembroke, tomorrow night, 5:30 to 7:30. If any of the businesses would like to come, if you'd like to join us, we'll be there. The new set of offices this year that will be taken over from the Chamber will be William Boyle. He's going to be the president this year. Carl Hein, who's going to be vice president. Mike Damon is going to be treasurer. Kelly Lee is going to be secretary. We're really looking forward to, you're not going to get small local businesses to participate in the Chamber. The Chamber, as you know, we've worked with, really happy with the town with the Pembroke Day. We have a legislative breakfast that's coming up March 30th, on Friday, Friday, March 30th, 2018, that's going to be at the Pembroke Country Hall. We're going to have Josh Coller, Vinnie DiMascio, Matt Marteri, Tom Calter. We've been talking about our events. Our second networking event will be at February, the Historical Building. Holly Dunlap from Pembroke Crystal is going to sponsor that. Bring in, hopefully, the new director from the Council on Agent to introduce himself. Holly, with that, anything that I can help you with as far as the Chamber, sponsorships or anything that I could do to help with economic development or anything that we jump to? Ed is on our board this year, an officer general from the Pembroke Police Department, but also, so we have some people in the OCS. So is there anything that we can do to help you facilitate the competition, talk to me or?
Is the weather helping the business?
What's that?
The weather's helping the business.
Weather is really helping the business. I can't wait till the new fire system's on the course and we can stop promoting our town's.
Yeah, Peter, I just wanted to thank you for coming in and giving us what's going on at the Chamber. Ever since the board has invited members of the Chamber to come before us, we've had, they've large group of people come in and they've explained their business to the public. And I hope the public has listened and learned about some of the businesses we have in Pembroke. And it's good to hear your plans for the future. And so we would welcome any other members of the Chamber to come before us at seven o'clock on a Monday night. With some little update on what's going on, I think it's been a positive thing.
And it's great for us, too, because it's something that we can give to the members of the Chamber to speak in front of you, because a lot of them are near the town. And you've got to give them some sort of push so that they can get in front of you so that they need anything, either way, we're going. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. All right. Happy to hear you.
Thank you, happy to hear you.
Thanks for coming in.
Mr. Chairman, under the tenement support I was going to provide, we'll be on FY19 process. You want to get Mike Buckner, your kind of, like, to, that, had our orders that it might come in, in a couple of discussions. Mike and I have been working, obviously, for a while on FY19. We've done 99% of all of the department kits. We had a couple that we still just got in there, then a couple of items specificized. And we had moved with the members of the school committee and the superintendent on Friday and moving ahead. Now, what Mike and I are at right now is we're looking at three different budgets. And Mike is probably want to explain what those three budgets are, but I can explain you over some of the details.
I'll back up just a little bit. Identify from fiscal '18 to fiscal '19. I'm on my own colleagues and you better. Hope he can, but the problem with lining up against this again, it's always shows for forecasting and increasing amounts of it. We take that in our efficiency assessment, not to be dollars, we have to be buying the person off of areas. Everybody, like the same one. It stands right now to provide the same level of service to the Pembroke 312 students. So we're up against the, that we have, so what we have now is two, we have two budgets, but actually, three levels of budgets. One that is balanced in the sense that it does, given the dollars, doesn't mean the services, it's the size of the place here. All the staff and services. The second budgetable looking one is a budget that would require roughly a million dollars of new money from the, from the, from the town's. The third budgetable looking one is the budget for that. It would require one, three, it would cost a billion dollars of external services funding. And that would be the only funding other than, to these chiefs, to the, to the, to the.
The last two budgets, my talk about would allow a couple of departments to increase their payroll.
So that's
Good thing you did.
Right, if we're discussing operational override, to get us back to where we should be. That's part of the discussion. We don't want to go over the well more than we have to. If we are going to go over the well, we want to make sure we're asking for spark or not. Trying to right the ship against all these external forces the federal government not paying. We also want to have foresight to take as much as we can at that time. Still responsible to the taxidermist. One last thing. Can you put a number on the mic? If we're only allowed to raise twenty half percent. Is it eleven limit? Which one million dollars after put that?
Actually, a million dollars.
That is a question. So we're able to raise twenty half percent and we would play five percent.
Correct.
Okay, well, I'm glad we have the initial facts. We'll obviously probably involve this a lot going forward. Do we have any public meetings going forward? Are we still in the department, department meetings?
Yeah, we're still at a couple of departments. And hopefully, we're going to have, you know, finished product for you guys in two weeks.
Will, I don't want to normalize the meeting, but I do have a couple of questions. Related to a brand new committee, the capital funding study committee that we need for the first time on Wednesday. And all those folks are intimate to what you'll be discussing on the budget side. So do you have the information to discuss for those folks? Quick memorandum of what we've discussed here already.
On what do you mean capital funding study committee?
Yeah, so if you could.
I plan on being there.
You're gonna be there, so at least we can have a discussion with those folks. Some of them are on advisory committee already and part of this discussion. Others are department directors. So don't want to have as much information, have as much input as.
And what I want to share with the committee on Wednesday night is the fact that the town received a fifteen thousand dollar grant to revenue forecasting plan for the town. And then I'll explain exactly what that entails. And that maybe at a future meeting, I could have a potential vendor that will do that for the town. You know, and this could be another governmental entity that would before the town, they pursue the proposal. But I'll be prepared to deal with that increasingly as the committee.
Dan, that suggestion, I hope that's good, that's helpful, Chris.
Yeah, that's why we all want the department to get this discussion.
That was very good note to end it on, fifteen thousand grand. Mike, thank you for coming in. Sure, we're together, fiercely responsible on whether to look forward to seeing that.
I have one other question on the capital funding study committee. Do we have a full committee now? We were looking for a person from the community.
No volunteers.
Not yet.
You have eight other people who are ready to meet on Wednesday.
We're moving ahead with that committee, which is the important issue.
Which could draw your volunteer.
Yeah.
That could really energize you.
Okay, thank you.
Bill didn't make it come in.
I hope. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. All right, move on to the board action items. The first item, board is in receipt from a letter sent by requesting to be removed from total membership and assume the vacancy as alternate on the zoning board of appeals. People have changed, they have to get out of there.
Well, we requested the appointment to alternate Phil Cowley.
Second.
Yeah, just like to say by many that Bill has been on the UDA for many years. Chairman as well, long time. Just have an issue where he doesn't have the amount of time that's necessary. So certainly can use Bill as an alternate number on the CBA. Thank you.
Sure, let's serve all that work. The next item, board is in receipt of a request and recommendation from former council and agent director Anna Siri and GATRA administrator Frank Gadd to appoint Ryan Joseph of One Hundred Valley Street as the town's GATRA representative. There's no term limit on this role.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Joseph Ryan of One Hundred Valley Street as the GATRA representative of the town of Fairbrook. That's worth the net.
All right, motion in second, follows in favor. Aye. I vote yes as well, that passes in the air. Next item, board is in receipt of a request. Board in receipt of an application for one day liquor license from the Chamber of Commerce after hours event of February thirteenth between two thousand five thirty to seven thirty P M. And the member of historical society bills submitted by Polly Dunlap of J S T H Enterprise Day designated as association member of Central. They seek to serve beer and wine at the Historical Society Building on one sixteen San Jose Street on February thirteenth on behalf of Central Bravo's five thirty to seven thirty.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to grant the application of Polly Dunlap on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce for a one day special liquor license to serve beer and wine under Mass General Law Chapter one thirty eight, section fourteen, to be exercised at one sixteen seventh street on February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen from five thirty to seven thirty.
All right, motion in second, on paperwork. Looks good. Paul, favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, you have an appointment to the Old Colony Public Services in Susan Chee, nominated by law.
Ah, yes, I see that. So move on to that item. Attached to the request and recommendation, former council and agent director.
That's it.
What's this?
It's from a friend from the same place, so.
Oh, I love it.
It's a different point.
I said that one. Attached to the request and recommendation, former council and agent director Anna Siri to appoint COA outreach researcher Susan Chee as the town's Old Colony Elder Services.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to appoint Susan Chee as the Old Colony Elder Services representative of the town of Fairbrook.
All right, with the motion in second, follows in favor? Aye. I vote aye as well. Any votes? I vote aye as well, so that passes in the air. Moving on to the next item. American Mobile Homes is requesting temporary trailer permit on behalf of homeowner Jennifer Settman who placed a temporary trailer in twenty-two furnace land as temporary living quarters as a result of fire damages. Heard notice fire on January first. The proposed trailer is twelve five six two. It replaced inspected by the town once. They are requesting a six month removal permit. The application cited for the, uh, some. Second. So the motion is in second, all the paperwork looks good. So follows in favor? Aye. Any votes? I vote aye as well, so that passes in the air.
Mr. Chairman, could I bring up something to the system of the board? We've gotten the trailers and the new permits. I would suggest that we make a provision for a three day allowance at the coast of the town, in the state office. And we would allow the town and state community to grant the permit for three days. So that if people get started, they can get out of the fire, or they can wait until we can go already. You know, we don't, we still live on the, uh, we can do this much better. This is your support, you will have to make it more, you know. And we would take that, uh, everybody's and, uh, so I would like to move that the board selecting the grant without an necessarily authority to sign a temporary trailer permit for a period of thirty days.
Bill said, uh, as having experienced the fire myself, I know immediate steps are necessary to provide the policy. But I think these have that issue.
So, yeah, so we have a motion in second, follows in favor? Aye. Any votes? I vote yes as well, so that passes in the air. We have a few policies ahead now of temporary trailer permits. Moving on to the next action. Board is in receipt of a letter of request from South Shore Racing LLC for a five K road race. The burning lane road, as preferred by the police chief on April twenty first, two thousand and eighteen, at nine AM. Venting Strong five K road race. They'll begin posting temporary signs at six AM. Remove that happen events. This request will be reviewed for approval by the police chief and the school department. This road begins and ends at Central High School, down by the lake, returning left on the Hoppamon slot, Lake Street. Left on the corner, so you left on the Valley Street, left on the other street. Right back on the Hoppamon Street, right, 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 on the high school.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we grant the use of town roads, uh, learning lane, in particular, where the point first for the Venting Strong five K road race. A circuit to approve would be, you know, least of the problem.
Second. All right, with the motion in second, just for the viewers at home. We appear the closing route, so you may available on nine as well. Follows in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? I vote aye as well, so that passes in the air. Moving on to the next action. Board is in receipt of application for a special year permit. Somewhere back for tournament director Joseph Russell, Jefferson, Dyak. This dates for basketball fishing club for the catch and release fishing tournament on Sunday, October seventh, two thousand and eighteen. The town beaches will be closed for summer season by that date. They have received approval from the conservation commission, but they always do stand conditions.
Chairman, I would grant the application for use of on the Dyak fishing tournament on October seventeenth. Jefferson.
Second. With the motion and second, follows in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? I vote aye as well, so that passes in the air.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My package, I'm dropping my package, temporary video of her for five fifty two Washington Street.
Maybe new business, it's a surprise, we came in today. There's a file for customer.
Mr. Chairman, left under four action program.
As we started to put the nets.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board accept the minutes of the selectmen's meeting on December eighteenth. As good.
Motion, wait a second, follows in favor? Aye. Any votes? I vote aye as well, who accepted the minutes of the secondary. Now, with the broad business, starting with a continued discussion of early slash non-medical Medicare eligible retirees health insurance contribution rates. The board is waiting for legislative update, looking at other regarding accounts. Council's recommendation to request a special act of the legislature to address hardship concerns of old folks from the classic age. Early or non-medical Medicare eligible retirees versus all retirees. And new legislation, H two five six seven. An act relative to two-year public retiring healthcare benefits. This bill aims to address the critical and ongoing issue of cities in town increasing insurance premium contribution percentage on existing retirees.
Mr. Chairman, I get the opportunity to speak with Representative Cutler, who was filing a petition out of town. But in the time that was coming without last meeting, we have had, uh, millions of dollars given to us. When you say now, it's the representative right now, I don't think this is a good job. Uh, has a bill that's already in progress. Seventeen sixty one year, it's been a few years. And I'm just thinking, as the chairman of the board, I was very, very curious. Every time I've had, I've seen the phone march, which has, I mean, if you can state that this was a take, you know, the area. Weekend, we didn't satisfy for another, uh, since Representative Cutler, who makes, uh, more effective, helps with the opponent position, if that be the case.
I certainly think that's, that's course.
So, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's a suggested motion, table aside and told. Board receives further information, action, etc.
All right, there's no, no stretch of our, you, the table, it's definitely.
Second. All right, with the motion in second, follows in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? I vote aye as well, so that down table, that's.
Yeah, I want to thank Representative Cutler for being as quick as he was with the answers. Only been working on this for a month or so. And it's been two holidays and snow has come. Doing the, uh, getting information and getting it accurate.
I feel obvious as well, you mean by the board? Mr. Chairman, I have a question in the broad business. Ed, could you speak if the survey goes requested that that review and retreat was ever formalized? The timeline survey, do you want to work with, uh, the folks over at Cubs, develop a survey for the town?
Yeah, I think last week because of the storm and some of the information. Now, we tried to forward to the unit, the facilitator and subject. So we're still working on the survey, we're still working on.
All right, so we made good progress there. Another writer we have on broad business is director of approved availability payrolls of December twenty seventh, two thousand seventeen, January second, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Bolter has submitted the record of December twenty seventh, two thousand and seventeen. We're right here, of course, that on that date, a person or two eleven hundred pounds payroll for warrants totaling six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, maybe hundred forty dollars and sixty-one cents into payroll, or totaling one million, two hundred and forty thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-three cents as prepared by the county. And authorize the itemized expenditures for payment. Do we have a motion to accept the report?
To accept the report, the record through Bill's date of December twenty seventh, January second.
Second. All right, with the motion in second, follows in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? I vote aye as well, so that passes in the air. Yeah. Additionally, Mr. Bolter has submitted the record of January second, two thousand and eighteen. We're right here, of course, that on that date, a person or two five accounts payroll for warrants totaling one million, three hundred thou- three hundred ten thousand, three hundred eleven dollars and seventy-eight cents. One payroll warrant totaling two hundred, twenty-four thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-two cents as declared by the town. And authorize the itemized expenditures for payment. Do we have a motion to accept the report?
I would.
Second. All right, motion in second, follows in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? I vote aye as well, so that passes in the air. Also, since, uh, okay, yes, you did, you are telling the town administrators board.
Right, your move, if you want, you got to show it so best, you know. Or so, the video that I sent you embody the announcement from Representative Cutler's office of seven. And she knows of those, the town, certainly, two more earmark plans, twenty-five thousand dollars for public safety purposes, and a hundred thousand for inclusion in the housing department. Submitting the letter, request to release those funds. And then, if these will be getting contracts for the appropriate savings. So, motion to make, studying controls.
Continue.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the weekend with the storm that we had, I received a call from an elderly housing facility in town with issues about the flowering and salting of the parking area. He's reported to me that it was a hazard situation and they were trying the elderly people that were living there, getting access to their vehicles if they needed to go to the store. We're gonna have a problem. So I was able to reach the chairman of the DPDW on this matter. And he followed up on that with the director. I also talked to Ed Farin as well. And we got the situation resolved. I thought there was a little discrepancy in who actually is responsible for flowering the parking areas and salting them. But it's necessary that just down through the housing facilities. But apparently, the DPDW done that. And so that's good news, and I would take it.
Okay, Mel, send your ask this way. Here it comes, move on to new business. Raise new business, the same thing? New business, our issues that arise, if they're not, we fully get to see by the chairman of the board selection at the time, that is, of course. American Mobile Homes is requesting a temporary trailer permit on behalf of homeowner Barbara Gardner, who placed a temporary trailer inside the two twenty Washington Street. It's temporary, they're for, as well as the fire damage, heard last year January seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Always three hours, twelve eighty-five sixty. They inspected, the other town wants to move. They are requiring, requesting a six month removal permit. The application cited for, uh, that.
Mr. Chairman, I would, yeah, because, you know, the house about got approached twelve months, a temporary trailer signed, described advice to Washington Street. Appeared six months subsequent inspection as on Friday.
Second. All right, the motion in second, follows in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Nine. I vote yes, twelve, so that down, so that's. Along to the upcoming issues. January twenty second, the annual town meeting, one. January twenty second at seven thirty and seven forty-five respectively. We have two, one, the national, right? One, the bureau of this, every week, this special. With, uh, the, uh, February fifth, at seven P M. Jack, Oseo, South Shore Community Action Council, request funding on February ninth, moral opposed, opposed on third. Signing of the town. We do want to, if the annual telepaying, may draw, annual tele election. And that's what that is. Move on to, oh, we have the executive session.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move that board go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chairs of the class. The Emerald Permanent Fire Fighters Association, motto two, three, five, one of the I A F F Union's grievance.
Chair, you guys declare, I'll take a call, I. And, yes.
Yes.
I vote aye.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Lastly, next regularly scheduled meetings, the board select will be January twenty second, two thousand and eighteen.
No, I don't.
I have a public session.
Yes, sir.
So, move to the next meeting.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
I was upstairs talking to everyone. This couldn't get away.
Hello, Dom, how are you doing? Good? Go play soccer again?
Yes, nice, quiet, peaceful. Yes. Enjoyed.
Good. I know, I know, I know. He's upstairs.
Thank you. Did you send me exactly the thing you guys were gonna take from the chairman of the board again?
You don't mind?
No, I was perfectly good. They're racing steam ovens on the same yesterday.
That's right.
That's what I was saying. Yeah, but.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you. We, uh, the idea, we go sixteen thousand hour of ice, we have to go a second.
The same videos of the New Hampshire. Spring comes and it's holding the ice. They race, they'll go a hundred feet through a puddle, over water.
They're gonna get to the other side.